Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag, and to the space of America. To the republic, for which it stands, one nation, united all, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Remind me not to shove my chair under there. Welcome tonight. We have, or do we have any board of committee reports? Seeing none, moving on. Citizens' concerns. Public hearings, none. Tracy is not here, so there is no town administrator report. And new business. Kablein? For the American Diabetes Association, New England, Framingham, Mass.
Good.
Good. You've done this, Tour de Cure's been here before anyway, right? You've done it for quite a few years. And if I looked, JR, Chuck and I have seen these guys before. I looked. And Ellen, everything, all the insurance, everything, signatures of police and fire. So if you can get up and just tell us kind of quickly what it is, that would be great. And then we'll ask for a motion.
Tour de Cure?
Can you just state your name and address?
My name's Steve Dumas. I'm on the planning committee with the North Shore Tour de Cure. It's American Diabetes Association's charity ride. I'm a diabetic, a volunteer, and a rider. The rides that will be coming through here is 100 mile and the 62 mile rides. They'll be coming downhill street in the report, coming down into Newbury. And we have a rest stop across the street at Upper Green. There are two other rides, the shorter rides, 31 miles and 15 miles, which will be going, we come out of Tarpsville Fairgrounds, they'll be going around Boxer and Tarpsville. Probably the two, the 62 is the largest ride, with probably close to 400 riders. And the 100 mile is a smaller ride, so it could be 500 riders coming through.
That's impressive.
Maybe more. We expect close to 1,000 riders total.
Wow. And you're going to use this as kind of a rest stop, right?
Yes. There'll be, we had, the very first year we did about five years ago was at Lower Green. And we moved it up about four years ago to Upper Green. We have a rest stop over across the street.
So can I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion?
None.
All those in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Blazing Saddles, North Shore cyclists from Tarpsville. Is it Jim White here?
Yes.
If you can just kind of, once again, this is a request to use the Upper Green as a rest stop from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. on August 15th, 2015, for bikes.
For bicyclists.
Go ahead. If, can I give us an idea of, have you done this before here?
We've been doing the ride for over 20 years, and I think we've been using the green the whole time.
So that's great. And everything's in order that I see here too, right, Ellen? So I'd entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion?
None.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Good luck.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Is there a Melissa Volkey here or a Jude Griffin?
There is not.
Okay.
Because neither is making.
Okay.
They're out of the country. But I checked with the police department and the fire department. They've both signed off, and all their paperwork is in order. And James Saret, the Highway DPW foreman, sorry.
Let me, let me tell everyone what it is first. And then Ellen, Ellen.
Sorry.
No, Ellen's perfectly made it a lot easier. It is a request to clean up trash along Palm Island Turnpike. And Mass Audubon wants to do it. And it's during Mass Audubon Statewide Volunteer Day, which is April 25th, 2015, 9:00 to 12:00 p.m. So certainly it is something very worthwhile. And usually we like people to be here, but just as Ellen said, they aren't. And I think because certainly doing something such as this, and their insurance and everything is in order, I looked, right? Everything's in order, Ellen. So I would, I would entertain a motion on this one, guys.
Sure. Motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion?
I think it's a great thing for them to do, and cleaning up our roads is fantastic. We should help them as much as we can.
Can't beat that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Erica, you're out there, right?
I'm here.
All right. This is a request of Erica Jacobson and Elaine, Elena Sales.
Sales.
Sales, Newbury Elementary School PTA, to use Town Hall Meeting Room Thursday, May 7th at 7:00 p.m. for voter information night. Erica?
Voter information night, we will present, just very simple. It's a Q and A session. It's not a presentation. It is not made to influence voters one way or another, to vote on any issue, but just simply to inform their decisions that they will make on their own. The five ballot questions will be available at that time for review, the exact language. And people may ask questions as to what they mean and go forward. We have support from members of the Finance Committee, the Board of Selectmen. We are already soliciting questions and input. And there'll be also representatives to answer questions about the stadium project for Triton. And also from the Municipal Building Committee to answer questions about the proposed complex and that ballot issue. So we're working on all of that. We'd like to be able to have the date so that we can move forward and get word out to organizations. And we'll ask for the public's help in submitting that information through any channels they can, whether we can use mailing lists that we have at our own disposal, and just different ways to educate and let voters know that there's a night to come and talk about things before they vote.
All right. That's quite an undertaking. Thank you for all of that.
Just trying.
Motion to approve.
And Erica is on the Finance Committee and has taken on an awful lot of different tasks to try to make things more understandable for the voters. Did I hear a motion?
I heard yesterday, too.
Second.
All right. As part of the discussion, before I take a vote, when I read this from Erica, I just wrote something down. And I'd like to say it, and I'd like for TV maybe to hear it. I could get lambasted for this, but it's just something that reflects at least my feelings and maybe some of the other people in town government. It is in response, but it's not critically in response to something I read in the paper about overrides. And I just started to muse. And part of that musing process was, you know, as a municipal leader, which we are at the table, and Erica is, and many others that are working together in our town are, I started to think that there are often perceptions that when discussed by the Finance Committee, CPC, Town Administrator Selectmen, sometimes the schools, and others, these perceptions can reach a point of critical need. And this critical need often must be addressed. In most cases, these critical needs are usually addressed in what seems to be the smartest way that will probably last the longest. That's our mission. I think we would be unintelligent if we didn't take that mission. People would say that we were not doing our jobs if we did not take this approach. Because of Newbury's fiscal makeup, these critical needs can become often requests for overrides or the like. But here, it is these requests that become just requests. Because those requests have to go before town meeting and go to ballot. So the town can still direct us on what they would like to do. But I caution the town going forward that we've got a lot of people that are trying their very best to try to work on solutions for some very critical problems or perceptions. And they need to be a little wise in how they direct us at the ballot and at town meeting because it's important for the town and how it will run in the future, and the town they will have in the future, and the town their kids will have in the future. So that was just a muse. And anyone else care to add anything to that, or?
I just, I hope we have a good turnout because, you know, if we had as much turnout as we do chatter on the corners and the hangouts, we'd have a full house. So I hope people just turn out and give us some input.
I'm doing absolutely my best, and I'm looking to anyone who has, anyone who I can connect to on Facebook, the more you can share it, the more you can get it out there, the more you can just take any opportunity for people to say, you know, hey, you've got a question. He's like, I heard they're doing it. I heard, I heard the Board of Selectmen, they all have cars. And I'm not giving them another car. That's one I heard, an actual one I heard at the school. And I very quickly said, they have cars of their own, I'm sure, but there's nothing from the town. And I, you know, just trying to take that reality and get that reality through, because I don't know who, where some of these things come up, but I can tell firsthand what things are important. Yesterday, having a full truck of water show up at my neighbor's house when she unintentionally let our, caught our field on fire that we share across the front of our home because she didn't have running water. And we had nine guys, four pieces of equipment, out there within 10 minutes and helped curl the fire so it didn't take down the power lines on Highfield Road. We have no town water where we are. We have no hydrants. Without that truck, I don't know what I'd be looking at today. So I am very thankful for what we do have here, and I want to make sure we keep it going. So I think everybody come, get educated, think about what things are on the ballot, and make the decisions that is right for them, but at least do it with facts and not perceptions.
And we'll certainly all be here, too.
Excellent.
Do we have, we have a motion, and we have a second. Do we, all those in favor?
Aye. Thank you very much.
Thanks very much, Erica.
Thank you, Erica.
We have a new business license as follows. We need to review it, and we need to sign it, and it seems to be all in order. Ellen, you've got all the information right here, right?
Yes.
And it is from Polygarant, very well licensed with an MSW and an LI CSW, DBA Seascape Therapeutic Counseling and Consulting at 9 Central Street, 2nd floor, Suite B in Byfield. So I would entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion?
None.
All those in favor?
Aye.
You know what? I worked outside today, and I'm tired, so I feel like I'm going to make.
You've got some color.
All right, you ready? Review and approve and sign. And this is a renewal. A 2015 business license as follows for Karen's Dogrooming of Palm Island at 49 Northern Boulevard, Newbury, Mass. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now, I haven't been turning my pages, so Kathy, let me get to your request. We have a request from the Palm Island Beach Coma, 23 Palm Island Boulevard, for live music on Saturday evening, May 30th, from 6:00 to 10:00 p.m. And Kathy has done a nice job in this presentation. So as we know, this hasn't been easy. And it hasn't been easy for any of us here. I don't think it's been easy for Sam. Do you want to get up and just maybe explain? Sam, I think you have, you would like to get up too after Kathy, right? So just explain to us what it is.
Kathy Peel, Palm Island Beach Coma. So yeah, so we're just looking for a one-day license for a Saturday night. You know, as we know, we went and appealed it with the state, and we've got the Sundays approved. But, you know, in the, in the state meeting, we talked about, you know, having at other nights or whatever that we've had in the past, where we've come and gotten these special approvals. And the state was like, well, that's, you know, you wouldn't be able to have a Saturday night all the time, but, you know, if you do it the same way that what we've done in the past, go for these one-night approvals. So that's what we're here to do. There's a little festival kind of going on on the island that day, and, you know, it's just going to be like a little continuation of the.
At the porch festival?
Thank you. Sam, what's your take on it before we entertain our motion?
My concern is, at the meeting we did.
This is in your packet, by the way, guys.
Yes. Talk about, you know, other night meetings. And one of the highlighted sections on the decision that I have here was, says that the board advises that those types of time periods, meaning a, like, they mentioned seven to 10 on a Saturday night, in certain circumstances, change the use for purpose of the code.
Now, you're reading this right from the conclusion.
From the BBRS hearing. And my understanding is different now that I'm hearing Kathy speak. My understanding was that if there was anything other than the 4 to 7 Sunday nights, it would be back at the BBRS for approvals. And based on what I'm reading here, that's.
Well, because in certain, in certain circumstances. Because then he made a joke about, oh, yeah, you could have like a kid's birthday party or something. He made, even made a joke about, you know, going through and requesting it as a, and I'm sure that the town would approve you to do something like that, you know, like a.
Well, you know, my, my other concern is with Chief Pearson, he was uncomfortable. And at the last time we did the, the fire detail, said that that would be the last one he'd approve. Because under the, the fire code, they state that a detail is not substitution for suppression. So at very least, you know, at this point, I would have to say, no, I can't sign off on it unless the Beach Coma wants to contact the BBRS and see if they want to clarify. But the way I read this and my understanding of it, because at the end of the meeting, I asked specifically, you know, so anything outside the 4 to 7 timeline? And he said it's a different ballgame. So I'm, I guess our perception leaving the meeting is different.
Okay. Yeah. I will contact them. Because like I said, he made a comment about, you know, oh, yeah, you could request like to have a birthday party or whatever, and, you know, at a different time. But like I said, it would be go back to the same type of thing, where we come and get approval for, for it, not as an every Saturday night, you know, situation.
You know, I can tell Sam is even, you know, and Sam's very sharp, and I read the code the same way Sam reads it, but, you know, we're kind of listening to you tonight, too. And it's almost like they had this before in a way, didn't they, Sam? Or that's why they had to go to the board because they didn't really have this? Meaning the one-night thing. Did they have the one-night thing, or is that why they had to go to the board anyway? I mean, here's one.
Right. What we were going to do, the last time the chief and I approved a one-night event
I understand.
Was the, that was the end. And we let that go through because we had already somewhat committed to the Beach Coma, didn't want to pull back on that.
Something of that, yeah.
But beyond that, yeah, that was going to be the, the end of that without BBR, BBRS approval, which right now, the only approvals I have in hand are a 4 to 7 Sunday. So I still don't have, you know, anything giving me that relief that I need. And again, this comes down to interpretation of the code. And, you know, I understand where they're coming from, and that it's, I get what they want to do. And I certainly want to support the businesses down there, but I have to do it within the code before me and with the town's liability in the forefront. So that, that's what I'm trying to do. It's not a, you know, I like, I like Greg and Kathy, they're great people, they, you know.
Well, you certainly, Kathy, can you go and try to get more clarification? Perhaps it's May 30th, you got time?
Yeah. That's my delay.
Should we make a motion to approve and contingent of the approval from the, is it BB, it's not BBC, that's the broadcast.
BBRS, the Board of Building Regulations and Standards.
I mean, we can certainly do that. I mean, what it is, is we just don't have enough information right now to go further than that. So.
At this point, you know, if we can continue to the next meeting and just, you know, if at that point we can provide more info, and if it's, if it's as simple as the BBRS saying yes or no.
Sorry, Sam.
That's okay. Then, then that pretty much answers our question for us.
That might be cleaner.
I just have one question, Sam, while you're here. Isn't the whole purpose of these one-day special use permits so that people don't have to comply with the full code to do something of this nature?
To a degree, but.
Don't accept liquor licenses with entertainment.
Well, but we have the, I mean, I'm just asking about this specific license. I wasn't sure. I mean, most places don't have fire suppression systems and so on and so forth. And we do provide one-day entertainment licenses to them. While the Beach Coma is certainly a specific example, and there's been lots of hoops jumped through.
I, I get it.
It seems like, would it be easier for someone else who didn't, hadn't gone through as many hoops?
Right. What it comes down to is the language that's in that section of the code, and it's a very, it's a poorly written section. And they, they end up meeting the criteria based on what's written. So, yeah, I get it. And it's, it's a little different than having, I guess, like Pittah Hall, if they have a party there. And again, it's lighting levels, it's noise levels, it's occupant load, it's service of alcohol. There's a number of criteria that fall into place that, that make them have to come and visit us.
Okay.
So, you know, I, I'm not trying to pick on anyone or anything, but again, the way it reads, and in talking with the, the fire engineer that was on the board, he agreed that, you know, I had just cause in bringing them there. Rick needs to behave back there. Because it is a very tough, it's a very interpretive section of code.
Yep.
And again, I left with a totally different perception that if there was additional times, and again, you may be absolutely right, that if it was a one-time thing, maybe, maybe not.
But I see, Sam, I think if Pittah Hall was a A2 user group restaurant.
That's the difference right there.
Then they would be where you are, Kathy.
Because they're not, they don't fall under that same use categories.
It's a one-time.
They get a, they get a pass essentially, you know. And I'm not saying the code's the best. There's certainly flaws in it. And this is one of the ones that they, they get caught in that net because of, of what they are.
Yep.
So, you know, hopefully the easiest thing is if we can call down to them and then say, you know, that's not what we meant, awesome, then I can, I can walk away.
Yeah, under certain circumstances.
And I mean, what that would, yeah, that's, that's the problem, is what's the circumstance?
Right.
And.
And what that would give Kathy back is that one-night thing that she had before.
Right.
The ability to ask for that. And do we need that in writing from them in order to have it?
You know, if I get an email, a phone call, what, you know, whatever the case is, like, we can, once Kathy calls down to them, deals with them, I'm sure they can shoot me something, just so I have some acknowledgement from that office saying, you know, this is what we meant by certain circumstances, is, you know, go for it. And possibly, and probably, but I, I'm just not comfortable with, with what's written and the way it's written. And then again, with the past fire chief having specifically said he won't move forward with a, another fire detail.
Yep.
Because he's also dealing with NFPA code versus building code, which brings in a whole nother, whole nother piece, but.
I mean, the same language stuck out for me when I read through this over the weekend as well. I thought, what, what exactly does that mean?
Yeah, so it's.
I mean, it pretty much seems like this is business as usual. It's, it's too bad it wasn't clear.
I agree. And, and we tried to be clear at the meeting and ask those questions, and obviously we weren't clear enough because we're standing here again. So hopefully we can get some clarification.
And hopefully you don't have to go through the process all over again, because that would be a shame.
Yeah.
You know.
Took a while.
Yeah.
We were without Sunday music for quite a few months, so a lot of loss revenue.
Sunday music output.
It's doing phenomenally.
We'll try to facilitate it, too. I mean, Sam went down with you guys last time and everything, too, right?
Yeah.
And usually, and the reason I'm putting it on you, one, you're the applicant, but typically they talk to the public more so than will talk to a public official. So I think you'll have better results than me calling. It's just the way it is. They tend to ignore us where you're the one that gets to complain to their superiors and have an opinion. You tend to get more results quicker.
Thanks a lot, Sam. Chuck, you got anything?
I was just going to say, if you're going to do that, please withdraw your request so we don't have to vote it down.
What about the table?
Table, we'll table it. Make a motion to table.
Okay. We can. It's just easier if they withdraw the request and resubmit it next meeting.
Let's, Sam had started the ball rolling, so let's make a motion to table, and then we'll.
Motion to table until the next meeting, which is 28th?
Do I have a second?
Second.
And if for any reason you don't follow within those timeframes, let us know, let Ellen know.
The 22nd? 28th. 28th.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Good luck with it.
Kathy, Sam, thank you so much.
Thanks, Sam.
Thanks, Kathy. We have, I don't see it, but we have, wait a minute, hold still. Okay, one-day liquor license for Protection Fire Company Number Two. It is a bridal shower, and it will be Saturday, May 2nd, 2015, from 4:00 to 8:30 p.m. Everything's in order?
Yes, it is.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion? All those, all those in favor? Aye.
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 We have the annual town warrant. It's in front of us. It contains some of the things that we'll be dealing with at the, at the voters box. And we need a motion to accept it.
To approve and sign.
Second. Any discussion?
None.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We have discussion of appointments of the Board of Fire Engineers. Kathy, I mean, excuse me, Ellen, what kind of was this? This is for?
So this is for discussion?
Of what, for when we usually request for some?
To, to keep your board or to extend it.
Okay. And this is, every, every year we have to vote the Board of Fire Engineers.
That's correct.
And I guess what we are supposed to be doing at this meeting is that we could be requesting for, for people that might want to be on the board. Or we could be, I don't know, so Nathan, what is, what do we got for makeup now?
I see you're.
Go up the microphone, it's probably just as good, because they don't hear you out in the.
The board is made up right now of three members, three captains from each side of town, a town liaison, and the fire chief. So essentially, right now, the board is made up of three members of each company, a town person, and myself. At this point right now, this is the first time the board has actually worked where there's not any leaning towards either side. It's a very, you know, sort of say, even board. Sometimes when certain issues tend to pull like a company heartstring, people tend to vote down that company line, Protection One, Protection Two. Now, given a lot of that stuff has changed over time, but I feel with this board right now, it's a, it's a really proactive board that's working really well together. The addition of Doug Pack around the board, and myself being separate from maybe some of the heartfelt company issues, kind of, kind of gives it a nice rounded, you know, round part of the board. It is an even board right now. But, you know, as a chief, it's more like my vote is a tiebreaker vote if needed, that we hope that, you know, most of the, most of the decisions won't have to be something that, that come down to the line like that. Most of the time, we're pretty much on the same page with this board right now. So that's, you know, that's how the board's made up at this time.
Thank you very much. So I guess what we have to decide, and we can make the motion accordingly. Do we want to request for submittals for nominations to the Board of Fire Engineers? So, and then we can probably make a motion, and then we can discuss that. Or do we want to make a motion to keep the board as it is? I guess that would amount to, so if you're listening to it, Nathan said.
Nate, you're comfortable the way it is.
I'm comfortable either way, but I'm comfortable with it right now.
I mean, we could always put a request out there and have them standing by.
Yep.
Just in case something happens. As we all know, things happen to boards. So I don't see why we can't do both.
Then make a, then make a motion.
Okay, motion, how do we want to word this? To accept applicants for the Board of Fire Engineers.
Second.
Simple as that.
Any, any discussion?
Well, would we be accepting those applicants as sort of associate members, kind of like we have on the planning board? Or as standbys?
We would be getting their resumes, and then we would be deciding if we want to appoint them to the Board of Fire Engineers, which would be making the Board of Fire Engineers larger.
Yeah, it's actually a good idea, because with all these core rechecks, background checks, everything else today, it takes time to get an applicant out in front. And it's nice if you have them there and ready at the hand. So, perhaps this is a good idea.
So, any discussion? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Resumes to the board's electing?
Say it again.
Resumes sent to the board's electing?
Yes.
This one is something that we have discussion of the creation of handout of informational booklets for override votes. This is a little outside my.
So, this is something that Chuck asked to be put on?
Yep.
Okay. Go ahead, Chuck.
That's exactly what I wanted, was it was an informational meeting, and it wound up morphing into what other people have come forward into this. So, it's still on there. I wanted to know if we could send pamphlets out in the tax book as informational only. And sadly, our lawyer left, so.
Aye. In, I mean, in previous discussion, it seemed like there were issues with that legally. As much as I wish we could, because I think it's needed.
Right, it seems like such a gray area.
I mean, it seems like, it seems like something that we could create, that people could pick up on their own, but not necessarily be included.
Right, and sending them out with the tax bill almost seems like a tweak.
Yeah, I think that's about the worst time to ask people for more money.
So, I, it's probably not a good idea, but I didn't know if we could have a separate mailing. I was gonna ask with that, and then, you know, it just, it seemed as such a gray area that I'm just gonna drop the idea altogether, and we will go with the informational area.
I can't find Ginny, so.
I think, you know, putting together a handbook might make sense because, or a document with the justifications that came from FinCom and such, and our own decisions that could be online, would be an easy place, so that if people are seeking information, they could, they could get it. As opposed to, you know, just talking, talking to each other, you know, sometimes it's hard to get to.
Talking with Elena Sales, she's, that's exactly what she's up to.
You know what it is? What it is, and, and we, maybe we should seek town council's advice, like Chuck said, to withdraw this till we have town council's advice. I mean, Martha, we ran up against something like this before. We wanted to do something, I can remember in the back of my mind, we couldn't do it, right?
You have to be very careful in terms of making sure that you're not advocating for.
Oh, here she is.
Your town council.
We, we need counsel.
Yes.
And this is counsel above. Chuck, go ahead.
I brought up for discussion the creation of a handout informational booklet on the override. I know. I guess that answers that all.
Well, just, just my reaction is based on the fact, oh, sorry.
Thanks.
My reaction is based on the fact that there are very specific rules from DOR about what you can and cannot say. It's, it seems ridiculous when you're only trying to inform the electorate, but the concern is that there is undue pressure or misinformation one way or the other. That's why the wording of those ballot questions has to be exactly the way that they're set forth in the Department of Revenue's model questions. There can't be a word out of place. So, the, a long time ago, back in the seventies, there was information forthcoming from the town about what the money was for, and it was viewed, there was litigation that ensued when something passed or didn't pass, but usually when it passed, that, you know, basically, there was a campaign to get people to pass this. And so, after that, all these rules got put in place stating that you can't put things in the question like, can you have, have an override to feed the hungry children? Or, you know, it's very, it has to be very antiseptic and very clear. So, I, I don't think that there is an opportunity for the town to put out information. Although, that doesn't mean that there, there can't be anything I can check into it if you wanted to have a question and answer session, or, you know, how it is that people can become informed without violating any legal restrictions. I'm happy to look into that for you, but.
So, what legal restrictions exist now? Because we already have a little handbook that often has some of the justifications for the money we're asking for and things like that at annual town.
You mean the finance committee's recommendations and so forth? Yeah. I will, I, I'll get with Tracy on that and figuring out. It's, everything's different, basically, when you're talking about overrides under Proposition Two and a Half because of the fear of undue pressure on.
In the danger of someone saying they were misled by the wording of a question.
Exactly, exactly. So, so I, I will look into that and educate myself on it, so I can educate you on how you can inform the voters. You know, obviously, just the question themselves don't set forth a lot of information, so.
So, they, when it's, when it's an override or a dead exclusion, it's a little different than like the warrant or something, you know?
Yes, it's, yeah, there's no rules really about what you can and cannot do to inform the voters about, town meeting voters or voters at the polls about warrant articles. But when it comes to two and a half overrides, it's, there's, it's, there's a lot, it's, you know, it's a complicated area. So, I'll look into that and report to Tracy.
Thanks, Ginny, so much. We have a piece of good news. We have an email from the Office of Governor Charles Baker and the Black Cat Grant Management System to the Newbury Council and Agent, and I'll go over to an email. And it says, congratulations, this is from Governor Charles Baker. I am pleased to notify you, the Newbury Council and Agent, you have been competitively selected to receive a state fiscal year 2016 Mobility Assistant Program, NAP, grant for buy replacement thirty-foot bus in the amount of forty-eight thousand dollars. And it's really, so Marty Joe and Council and Agent have done a really good job. They've got funds for a new bus. So, that's terrific.
Fantastic.
All good.
The, I'm in the communications, by the way, and I will go back to old business. We have a letter, and it will start to make some movement for our board. And we already have someone in place that's put this together as I go forward, and that's John O'Connell. Martha, did you get a chance to read this part of it with the Ipswich Watershed? All right, well, this, this is, Dear Jeff, on behalf of the National Wildlife Federation in the Ipswich Watershed, and this is from Wayne Castingway, I believe. This is part of that grant that I've told you guys before that I'm involved in. And one of the parts of this grant is to, we are writing to regard to one of the projects that is involved in this grant, and that's Community Coastal Resilient and Adaption, and Adaption Plan. And this is a community effort to identify and prioritize municipal assets, including both human-built infrastructures and natural resources that are risk from storms. These projects will recommend strategies to reduce risks. The project will build a prior work and supplement existing initiatives in, in your community, so it'll go along with the stuff we're doing. It will address concerns related to coastal storms, sea level rise, flooding erosion, and other associated threats. The project will result in a comprehensive resiliency and adaptation plan for the town of Newbury, which will assist you in ongoing planning efforts and place community in an ideal position to pursue implementation funding. So, what it's gonna do is put together the informational trails. Martha, you're part of the team that was in place with John O'Connell. So, what they have asked us to do is designate a point person for the town. And is that probably John or you?
It's John.
And it's gonna be six individuals that John has worked and Martha has worked. I mean, is it John O'Connell, Martha, Doug?
Deb Rogers.
Deb Rogers. Who else?
I'm not.
Hans Tans down the street from me. And so, we're getting that together, and they're gonna come before us, guys, for appointments to that committee. And that committee will go forth, and it's the goal of the Great Mars Project to identify and prioritize high-value municipal assets. And they're gonna have, in year one, 2015, they have a lot of meetings, they're gonna, we're in a three-group, we're with Salisbury, Newbury, and Newburyport, and there's also Essex, Ipswich, and Raleigh. So, and these are the towns that the grant works with. And in year two, if you go to, you'll see the Adaption Strategy, Synthetization, and all this. So, and we'll come up with the ability maybe to go after some grants and work to preserve and, and protect some of the infrastructure or whatever we decide is important within this town, if I read that correctly. So, that's a big step. There's quite a bit of money. That's a $2.9 million grant that is gonna be spread out in those different five ways. We also have a letter from the town of Merrimack. This is to the Office of the Board of Selectmen. It is an invitation, on behalf of the Boards of Selectmen in Merrimack, Groveland, and West Newbury, I'm writing to invite you to participate in a meeting with all the member communities that belong to the Whittier Regional Technical High School, along with our state legislators. As you have probably read in the newspaper in recent weeks, we're, we have concerns with several of the policies at the school, including admission, school choice, and busing policies. We thought it would be beneficial for all the members, communities, and our legislators to get together and discuss all the issues and try to develop a plan for these. So, we're setting a tentative date of May 14th at 6:00 PM. I don't know if we have anything else going on at that time. I will plan to attend, and I'd love to have someone else go with me, so. What day of the week is it? What it, do you have your calendar, Ellen? It does, when you really, it doesn't matter anymore what the day of the week is. When the meeting's hit, you just.
I teach on certain days, so.
I know, I'm teasing you.
I think Martha's looking it up for us.
But anyway, we'll, we'll move on, and if anyone would like to attend with me, let me know.
May 14th is a Thursday.
Thursday. So, like I said, up until, at this time right now, I, I will intend to go, and I'd love some company.
I might be able to go.
You got my cellphone. Chuck, I'd like to have, if you're not busy, and, you know, well, we can at three. All right. We have, this was interesting, and it's new to me, and I thought it was great. This is the first time, at least I've seen, a March newsletter and upcoming events from the Friends of the Newbury Town Library. And on Tuesday, May 31st, we held our monthly meeting. Our next meeting will be Tuesday, April 28th. And what they did is, at these meetings, they have actually gone through and explained some of the things they've done to try to help the, the library. So, their fundraising includes a Mission Oak fundraiser that they've had, a flatbread fundraiser Tuesday, April 7th, from Find a 9:00 PM Flatbread in Amesbury. Not Your Average Joe is gonna be in the month of May sometime. They're doing a plant and bake sale. And then, they had some general news, which is kind of interesting. They do a lot at the library, I didn't realize they did. For instance, there's gonna be a half-day movie showing, a double feature. It's gonna include Penguins of Madagascar, three nights in, in, you know, Night at the Museum. They also have got stuff coming up, like on April 25th at 11:00 AM, they have, is it Jimmy Cunningham doing his talk and presentation on the Chipman Mine? Then, at May 23rd at 11:00 AM, there is a Bandit in the Arctic. So, they really have a potpourri of interesting things going on at the library that I didn't even realize they did. So, it's kind of neat. So, I, I applaud them for, for, for work, for raising money for the, for the library, Friends of the Newbury Library. We have an email reply from Elizabeth Warren, and that's for the letter we sent that, that Ellen drafted. And she did thank us and, and thanked us for our help. And, and, as we know, clean water regulations and source of pollution are very important, and they need to be somewhat, it's confusing now. And it was made confusing by, and complex by a Supreme Court decision in 2001 and 2006, when it called into question the Clean Water Act, which is the protections for many streams and wetlands. So, our letter is to help people like Elizabeth Warren in their quest to, to have an EPA rule, and that makes sense. We also have a letter from Marty Walsh, and it is to, make us aware that April 15th is the second anniversary of the marathon bombing. And he is requesting that the municipalities and the towns have a moment of silence, no matter where you are, if you can remember, at 2:49 on Wednesday. And he also invites all our community's officials to join in observing One Boston Day, that April 15th, to mark that in time as the day where, you know, things have changed. The, the attacker's intent was to shatter the sense of the celebration, cooperation, and community that is fostered by the Boston Marathon. They failed, and in the midst of conundrums and brutality, we witnessed countless acts of bravery, heroism, and first responders, volunteers, and visitors. I mean, that's, that's a day we all know well, so to remember it with a, with a moment of silence, and to remember that day as One Boston Day, and really, probably not just One Boston Day, but thinking of everyone that was involved and how it's made us stronger. So, he also asked that when we do anything during that Boston Day, Mayor Walsh is asking the individuals, local officials, business, and community organizations to share how they are making that day on social media special with the hashtag #OneBostonDay. This one here, Chuck, you've seen this before. Remember this? It's been before us in years before?
Yes.
And, I don't know, did you guys read this, ER?
Yes.
You know, I never knew what this was. But because of the grant that we have now from Sandy, I've been at classes and I'm taking, and I took the pesticide test. And what this turns out to be.
Your best.
I have, I'm, could be. What this turns out to be is, which is kind of wild, in the state of Massachusetts, and it's regulated by the Department of Agriculture Resources, which is MIDA, any rights of ways, any schools, any daycare centers, they have to have, which is an integrated pest management plan in place. Because over the years, there's been a lot of use of pesticides, and an integrated pest management plan is a plan that you do a lot of things before you apply pesticide. So, let's say in schools, you block up holes where, you know, termites could enter. Let's say on right-of-ways, you do cutting and pruning before you have to apply pesticide. And part of it is so important, because if you kind of looked in that packet, right-of-ways, if you went to the page where you saw where right-of-ways could go, I mean, they pass people's wells, they pass city wells, they pass protected wetlands, they pass natural heritage. So, I mean, so they set up these things, and it, and it, they're sensitive areas. They have to flag, protect, and be careful what they do, so it's kind of, and I never knew what it was. This has been before us before, and I kind of looked at it and never thought much about it, so. Did we have what I skipped back there? What was it? Old business? I don't know, what, do we have any old business?
Meeting updates more than old business. I mean, we have to do, do we have to sign all the articles at some point for the town meeting? Are we gonna do that later?
That'll come to us. Yep.
Okay.
Old business, any you can think of, guys?
At some point, we have to reassign someone to the master planning committee, a board liaison, but we want, I don't know if you want to wait till we have a full board to do that.
When is that getting really?
Well, we're issuing the RFP probably this week or next week, and hoping to get the committee formulated and say, sort of, over the next month.
So, I mean, maybe, should we wait till we reach a full board? You won't, will you be cruising before May, you know, so maybe we should, yeah.
Wait for a full board.
So, if there's nothing else, I have moved to meeting minutes, March 24th.
Motion to approve this hearing?
Motion to accept.
Yep, motion to accept.
And second, Chuck?
Second?
Yep. Yep, yep. Any discussion?
None.
All those in favor?
All right. Thank you.
Minutes.
March 30th.
March 31st, 2015, same thing. I guess we were all here, so do I have a motion?
Yep, motion to accept.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We also have executive session minutes from March 24th, 2015. And this was on request of bargaining with the police. So, we just need a motion to. the court of bargaining with the police. So we just need a motion to accept those.
Yep, motion to accept is read.
Second.
Any discussion?
None.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Warrants will be coming. What do we have to sign? Ellen, do we have much? We do have, do we have any meeting updates?
Yes. Last Monday, or maybe the Monday before that, I had a meeting with Martha and Richard Moss and Tracy with a organization that had a proposal for us as far as putting solar on the landfill. They had a, a new formulation for how they can make it.
Tipping things?
Yeah. Well, not, not tipping things, but more how they would set up the payment schedule. So they, they think it is a better formulation that gets the town more money. But one of the things that came out of that meeting and actually came from some of the research I'd done is that the cap for how much money can go back into the grid is set by the state, and we've reached that cap for municipalities. So if you have any contact with, say, Bruce Starr, Lenny Mira, Charlie Baker, encouraging them to raise the cap of energy that can be put back into the grid will make it much more feasible for us to generate some income from these things.
Let me ask you a question, and I'm not doing it to catch or anything. Is it the town that has reached the cap, or is it like an area?
No, it's the state. The state sets a cap for how much energy can be generated from solar and accepted by the grid. And they set a cap for municipalities, and they set a cap for just residents.
This is the same as a net metering cap, correct?
Yep, net metering cap. That's exactly what it is. And the municipalities have currently met theirs. And so I've already written a letter, because I was writing a solar letter to all of my reps anyway, to, and asked for that cap to be raised in the state. But it may behoove us as a board or as individual selectmen to contact our, contact people to push that along. It seems like it will happen anyway, but it, it's never hurts to give them a push in the right direction.
When does, do you know when the new period starts? Because that, basically, that's a yearly deal, right?
Once they set it, it, it just goes forward perpetuity. Right now, it's nine percent of load, and so if they set it at 12%, it would be 12%.
Until it's fulfilled, and then it's reconsidered.
And then they, they'll talk about it and keep going.
Now, who, does the state set that, huh? Not National Grid, I mean, but they work.
And we're also looking at putting out to bid projects on the landfill. And so hopefully the town can start generating some solar income from that project if we get good bids and can approve it. So that's been moving forward.
Considering what the overrides reflect, needs would be, extra income would be great. How much are, how big a solar installation could the landfill entertain, did they say?
The project that was proposed years ago was, was fairly small, 250 kilowatts. But some of the companies that have been in discussion recently feel gazuntai, that with advanced technologies, more can be done on that site. And one of the questions that came up during the meeting that we had was, how much tree removal would the town be comfortable in surrounding area around the dump to gain more, more power? And that was a, I said we'd look at proposals, but I wasn't going to give a commitment about the town clearing land. So, but the proposal that was sort of tentatively forwarded, oh, is there just one, or are there many? Just one.
That goes your way, I think. Chuck did that?
Yep.
Okay. I just missed one.
Well, you've done a lot of work. It's good.
So hopefully, yeah, hopefully we can start to move that forward, and it will bear some fruit.
I think that's the type of project a lot of people in this town will be happy to see, certainly in the right place.
Yeah.
I learned something tonight. I didn't think there was a ceiling for, I mean.
That's, that's what causes the mad scramble, is the, everyone trying to get approved and get a, get it under that cap before it's sealed off and has to be reconsidered again.
It's complicated.
Yeah.
Yeah, the utilities are pushing, pushing back against solar generation.
I think the biggest issue is they, they maintain all the infrastructure, the wires, the poles, the folks working on them. And, you know, the, unfortunately, one side effect of solar is they're, you know, kind of leapfrogging onto the, the infrastructure. And I think National Grid would like to see them contribute more towards maintaining and upgrading, you know, the, the substations and the wires and poles and things. So it's going to be, it's going to be a battle playing out for a while yet.
And then you get the cross-indexing with the state, though, with the idea they don't want to cut many trees.
Right.
You know, and they're hoping there'd be more industrial and landfill and rooftop insulation, so.
Right. And that's, those are definitely the spirit of these programs, is to put them on landfills and brownfields and roofs and things.
Interesting. Now, Ginny?
Yes.
Are we in position to do what we have to do, or where are we?
The one you want to use. So you just read, you're going into executive session for the purpose of that.
Okay. Number five.
Yes.
Do you have your piece of paper that we have as a roll call?
Yeah.
All right. All right. We do have executive session, and we will not be returning to adjourn after executive session. So we have executive session that is to investigate charges of criminal misconduct or to consider the filing of crim, criminal complaints. So we have to have a roll call vote of each individual to enter into executive session. So, Chuck?
We need a motion first, right? Motion to go into executive session.
Seconded.
Okay.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye, yep.
Chuck?
Aye.
Jeff Walker?
Damon Jesperson.
Jack Colby.
Done enough correctly?
Yep.
Okay.
Then we may go.
Who's going into executive session with you, please?
Say it again.
Who's going to be in with you? Is it just Selectmen? Are you going with Council or anybody else?
Town Council will be there, and?
And Chief Riley.
Chief Raleigh.
On his way up. Chief Riley, thank you.
Yep.